Encouraged and welcome. Input must be informational in nature and address the entire board rather than one particular member. The Board of Education cannot engage- Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Les, can you- Les, I'm doing it again. I'm tired. I do miss him, but I appreciate Zach here. So Zach, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zach. And then can you please call vote?
Scott Andreessen.
Here.
Natalie Copeland.
Here.
Al Dahlgren.
Here.
Zach Dorholtz here. Shannon Haas.
Here.
Monica Segara-Swartz.
Here.
Heather Weems.
Here.
The following cabinet members and staff are present at the District Administration Office, Superintendent Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education Kay Nelson, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education Dr. Mike Gravard, Director of Innovation and Instructional Technology Ryan Cox, Executive Director of Research Assessments and Enrollment Don Roper, Executive Director of Operations Gary Ganji, Media Technicians Paul Novak and Gordy Scott, Custodian on Site Steve Hain. Following cabinet members and staff are virtually present, Director of Community Engagement and Communications Tammy Deland, Executive Director of Community Education Adam Holm, Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations Tracy Flynn Bowe, and Executive Assistant Jan McGuire.
Thank you. Then we need to approve the Board of Education meeting and work session agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Scott and a second by Al. Zach, can you please call vote again?
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Monica Segara-Swartz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board atops routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. Very short consent agenda tonight. We have Item A, approval of personnel staff changes. Item B, approval of monthly treasurer's report for April 2023. And Item C, approval of monthly financial report for April 2023. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no removal, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Scott and a second by Heather. Zach, again, can you call vote?
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Monica Segara-Swartz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board atops routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. Very short consent agenda tonight. We have Item A, approval of personnel staff changes. Item B, approval of monthly treasurer's report for April 2023. And Item C, approval of monthly financial report for April 2023. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no removal, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Scott and a second by Heather. Zach, again, can you call vote?
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Monica Segara-Swartz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board atops routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. Very short consent agenda tonight. We have Item A, approval of personnel staff changes. Item B, approval of monthly treasurer's report for April 2023. And Item C, approval of monthly financial report for April 2023. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no removal, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Scott and a second by Heather. Zach, again, can you call vote?
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Monica Segara-Swartz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one informational item, the middle level handbook highlights and presented- well, Kay, will you introduce your team? Kay Nelson, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education.
Yes, I sure can.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, board members. I am honored to be present with my colleagues from our middle schools. We have Principal Nutter from North Junior High, Janet Churkey from Kennedy, and Joel Hightkamp from South. And they're going to go over a few of the handbook highlight changes that you'll be seeing in a couple of weeks when we bring our secondary and elementary handbooks forward for approval. So I will turn it over to the team.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Putnam, Chair Haas, and school board members. As Kay said, my name is Joel Hightkamp, the Principal at South Junior High, and I get the privilege of helping support the revision of the middle level or, excuse me, secondary handbook each spring. And so we're here this evening just to share a couple of highlights of some little more significant changes to best support our middle level students specifically. So as you can see on the screen, the first piece that we'd like to talk about is personal electronic devices, specifically calling out cell phones. On the right-hand side of the slide, you can see a graphic that we used at South Junior High to teach our away-for-the-day policy that we had used this past school year. And specifically, that just calls out when it was okay to engage on a cellphone and when it was not. Our policy at middle level this year was that cell phones were okay to be used until 8:30. They were to be powered down and put away, and then students were able to engage with them again during their lunch period with the expectation that they went off at the end of the day. We're looking to adjust that change to remove the engagement during the lunch period for some various reasons. Some greater focus throughout the course of the school day, greater engagement, both academically and socially, with their teachers and their peers, with the desired outcome of increased social and academic success. So given the policy that we had in place with the away-for-the-day, with the multiple points of engagement during the day, we still did have almost one in three or a little over one in three students have at least one office discipline referral in regards to cellphone misuse. And you can see that we ended the school year with just over 1,800 students, and those 1,800 students accumulated more than 2,400 office discipline referrals for misuse of the cellphone. And each one of those has a touch point with a member of our student support team. And so the amount of time that still goes into that was great, given the way we had used the policy of away-for-the-day. And so if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, we can kind of skip this one. This would be the specific verbiage that we're looking to put into the student handbook, and that would be for middle level students, that we would use cell phones before and after the instructional day, removing that time during the lunch period, and that we would expect that that cellphone be away and powered down and in a student locker. On the previous slide, it calls out watches as well. At this point, we are not going to do anything with Apple Watches, given that we haven't had an issue with Apple Watches at all this year. And when the phone is powered down and put away, there are very, very few students that have the actual cellular access on the watch as its own entity. And so we don't foresee an issue with Apple Watches at this time. So we're looking to just change the phone policy as it reads in the student handbook.
Okay. Yes, I'm Jenna Churkey. I am the Assistant Principal at Kennedy Community School. And today, I'm here to share the outcomes of the away-for-the-day pilot program, which we implemented during our third trimester. We initiated this program in response to significant increase in disruption caused by students' cellphone usage during the middle of our second trimester. These disruptions were primarily related to social media occurring both within and outside the school hours. Specifically during lunchtime and passing time, we observed students engaging in disruptive behaviors such as airdropping pictures, using social media, and recording or taking pictures of their peers. As a result, office discipline referrals became a time-consuming task for our administrative staff. To address this issue, we took the following steps. First, we consulted with Assistant Superintendent Kay Nelson. And then prior to our implementation, we met with classroom teachers to gather feedback and ideas as we identified any potential barriers. Together, we designed clear expectations that required students to refrain from having their phones on them from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., encompassing our instructional school day. We communicated with families through email and phone calls, informing them about the program and ways students and families can still communicate with one another during the school day. The response from parents was generally positive and supportive, although our students, as expected, were less than enthusiastic. In preparation for the pilot, we incorporated lessons into advisory sessions. These lessons were designed to educate students about the new away-for-the-day expectations and the progressive discipline aligned with violating these expectations. We also reinforced this message during students' lunchtimes. As we commenced the pilot, we were uncertain about how students would respond. However, the majority of students complied by storing their phones in their lockers on the first day. Some students needed reminders, but as a team, we allowed these reminders during this initial phase. As the away-for-the-day program progressed, we observed an important improvement in student interaction and social engagement during lunchtime. However, we also encountered different forms of disruption during lunch, such as increased movement and louder voices from our students. To address these challenges, we introduced alternative activities that fostered social engagement while maintaining a structured environment. Students were allowed to bring card games, and we organized weekly trivia sessions. Additionally, we implemented a daily mystery table. And I got this idea from our elementary music teacher. That's phenomenal. Each day, a staff member secretly selected a table that would follow the lunchroom expectations, revealing the identity of this mystery table only at the end of lunch. If the table complied with the expectations, they received Colt Cash, and Colt Cash is a part of our Positive Behavior Intervention of Support Program, what we give them for reward. However, if a table did not earn the mystery table designation, we wouldn't identify who they were. This process was repeated with different staff members and tables each day. Surprisingly, the students were highly motivated by the mystery table and held each other accountable. As we distributed Colt Cash, we collected feedback from students. It became evident that Colt Cash alone was not as motivating for them, as they received the same reward system as our elementary students who attend Kennedy that went into a drawing and their names were read over the speaker. Considering this, middle school students expressed a desire for a school store where they could use Colt Cash to make purchases. Taking student feedback into account, we established the Colt Store for the final trimester. This store allowed students to shop on Fridays using the Colt Cash they had earned throughout the week. To ensure student input, we conducted surveys to determine preferred items for the store, and we also provided a suggestion box for continuous feedback. The implementation of this pilot had a profound impact on our students. We witnessed increased social engagement among students as well as an amplified student voice and participation. By introducing alternative activities during lunchtime, such as card games, trivia sessions, the mystery table, and the Colt Store, we provided students with a structure and engaging options to replace disruptive cellphone use. This led to a more positive and focused lunchtime environment. But to us, the most impactful feedback came from the students. As much as they would hate to admit this, they appreciated the away-for-the-day. Students communicated they enjoyed to have face-to-face communication with their peers during this social time in their day, and they enjoyed learning some new things with our weekly trivia. We even had one of our students at eighth grade graduation identified playing Uno with her friends was her favorite memory at Kennedy. In summary, the results of the away-for-the-day pilot program at Kennedy Community School have brought highly- has been highly positive. We observed a significant decrease in cellphone and technology misuse write-ups, an increase in social engagement, and were able to think outside the box and implement new alternative activities we otherwise would not have thought of if students spent their lunchtime on their cell phones. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair Haas, Board members, Superintendent Putnam. I am Brian Nutter, the principal at North Junior High, and I'm going to quickly tell you about our proposed change to backpack usage at the middle level. Essentially, what we're proposing here with the change is moving back to pre-pandemic procedures of not allowing middle-level students to carry backpacks around the school during the instructional day. Students would still be allowed to bring backpacks to and from school with the expectation that they store their backpack in their locker for the instructional day. And so the proposed language change there is no backpacks carried throughout the building. Yes, Kay just reminded me that we will be allowing students to carry binders and trapper keepers. Those that are of my generation remember what the trapper keepers are. Those that may not be of that generation, think of a three-ring binder that either has a Velcro or zipper closure to it, and students can keep notebooks in there, pencil cases, things like that. So we have put that on our school supply lists as a recommended item for our families to purchase if they are able. We have also, as middle-level schools, obtained binders and trapper keepers for students who want them and are unable to afford them. So those will be available to all students that wish to use them. The last thing that I want to mention, and this is specifically about backpacks and the away-for-the-day personal electronic device policy, is our communication plan. So we know these are somewhat small changes in language in the student handbook, but for our students and our families, really big changes. So we do have a plan to communicate these changes with our students and their families. And so we will- okay, sorry. So some of the things that we are planning is we're going to create a video for back-to-school so that when we are sending out our back-to-school informational emails to families, we can include a link with that to a video that's been produced by our communications department here that will include these new changes so that students and families aren't surprised when school starts. Included in those videos, we'll be answering some of the questions you see on the screen here. We know some families and some students will say, well, how will I get in touch with my parents or how will I get in touch with my students during the school day? We anticipate this might be one of the biggest questions, and so we'll try to preemptively answer that question in our pre-communication before the school year starts, both through the video. And then similarly to what we've done the past several years, we will also share these new changes with our families when we present the back-to-school information on the Hit Egg TV when we do that, so that families will have another opportunity to get these changes before the school year starts. Contacting our students, getting in touch with your student during the day. All of us know what it was like pre-cellphone to have your parents need to get in touch with you, or maybe you get in touch with your kids pre-cellphone. So it's not going to be a big change for our school staff. I think in many cases today, even with cell phones, we can, as a school staff, get in contact with students and get a message to them from their parents quicker than the parents oftentimes can get them to their student, even if they are using the cellphone, because most of our students are abiding by the away-for-the-day policy that's currently in place, which really only allows them to use it during lunch during the school day. So calling the office like we used to do will still be the quickest and fastest way to get ahold of our students. And then our last thing is our multilingual services are ready and prepared to translate all of this messaging so that we can get the new messaging out to all of our families in a language that they are able to easily understand.
Okay, then we're going to open it up to questions or comments. Monica, then Al.
Hi, thank you for the presentation of the changes. Could you tell me a little bit more about why the changes in the backpack policy and what was happening before the pandemic and why did you change it to allow them, like the whole story?
Yeah, so just to kind of go back. So before the pandemic started, the policy was in place that middle schoolers could not carry backpacks. That policy was created prior to my time in St. Cloud, but I have had opportunity to share with my colleagues why that policy was implemented. A lot of it has to do with safety in the classroom. So in a classroom of 30 students, some of our classrooms being small and cramped, having backpacks, as I look around the room here and see kind of bags by people's feet, they did pose a safety hazard in our classrooms, just when we had the sheer volume of them, if many students were bringing backpacks to class. We allowed students to bring backpacks during the pandemic because we didn't want students congregating at their lockers. We were trying to keep students social distance. And our classrooms, if you remember, when we came back from the pandemic, we were alternate days with less than half of our students, because many of them opted for the Digital Learning Academy. So we had that additional room in the classroom and didn't have to worry about tripping over as many bags, because we were less than half-capacity in all of our classrooms. Now that we're back to full capacity and we do have some full classrooms, it is one of those decisions that we're making through a lens of safety and keeping the classroom environment safe for all of our students.
The other question that I have is about the multilingual phone service. How does that work? Who gets that? And what languages do we have? And I don't know if that question is for you.
Yes. Specifically for North, most of our communications that go out are translated in Spanish and Somali. And then we do have the language service that we can use for other languages.
This is a new system, so Dr. Putnam's going to explain what's rolling out with this.
To add on to what Brian said about how we communicate in a variety of languages, we piloted at Madison successfully, and then we'll be rolling out to every school an option for when you call us. Currently, if you call our school, you only get information in English. We know that that's not- doesn't provide access for all of our families, so now there'll be an option in Spanish and Somali, telling you to press whatever number it is. I don't know the number. That goes to Spanish and Somali-speaking individuals, who are then able to interpret and take the action that they need to take. And that will be provided at every school. I don't even know that you guys even know that yet. We were piloting at the elementary, so really, I think, an exciting change for our school system.
Thank you. Yeah, it's exciting. That was it. Thanks.
Once again, I'm confused on the backpack one. The policy going forward will be that they are not to carry backpacks to the classrooms, correct?
Yes.
And what we're changing the policy to in the handbook is- what we're changing it from is middle school students are allowed to bring backpacks to school, but will be expected to secure their school- issued locker- expected to secure it in their school-issued locker during the school day prior to the start of advisory period. That sounds like what we're going to. And we're changing it to no backpacks will be carried throughout the building, which sounds to me like we are not allowing them to bring a backpack to school. So I don't know.
The policy was never formally changed in the student handbook, given the pandemic practices. And so we changed it, right, for student safety during that time. And so I think what we're doing now is we're just trying to make it very clear and concise in the student handbook and then publicly going back to that pre-pandemic policy.
See, I guess, and I don't want to argue with you here, but when you say no backpacks will be carried throughout the building, you're saying no backpacks.
So you're saying more clarity on-
Before or after school.
Sure.
You're saying no backpacks in the building. And I think that what we're going to is we're saying, bring your backpack to school, security in your locker, but you can't carry it through the building during the school day. And I don't think that that says that, so that's my source of confusion. So, okay, thank you.
You had mentioned, when you did the pilot, that part of what you are responding to as well is use of social media in an unproductive or perhaps just inappropriate way. Can you talk a little bit about the scope and the excessiveness of how social media is being used and the impact it's having from a bullying perspective or from a contact perspective, and how you think this impacts your all ability to protect our students?
Yeah, I can actually talk to that. Just before, when we did have the cell phones that second trimester time, we would have a lot of carryover, even from the weekend, or just different social media use in school, like a picture of one student would circulate throughout. And then here, we allow the phones during lunchtime, and here, that phone is right- or the picture is available to kids again. So it was like, kids couldn't escape the things that happened over the weekend, and then we would have to dig up, because those things affected our school environment. So we'd be spending a lot of our time, you know, dealing with that and protecting that student that could be, you know, being bullied. But once we implemented the pilot, it was as if so many of those situations that happened outside of school stayed outside of school and really didn't affect our school environment. We actually had a picture that was taken second trimester, though, resurfaced over the weekend, like the last week of school. And I spent two and a half hours of my day trying to get this picture taken, you know, taken down. And I would ask kids, I'm like, can I see this picture? They're like, well, Ms. Churkey, I can't show you my phone. I'm going to get it taken away. And I'm like, no, no, I need, you know. And then to come to find out that really it wasn't being recirculated, that a girl saw it on a camera roll, anyways. But it was just a reminder of all the time that we put into this and that kids just can't escape the social media pieces, even in their school day, when we have it accessible, even during that lunch period.
Thank you. I know this isn't part of this presentation, but Kay, can you speak a little bit to what impact that has at the high school level?
I would say that as our kids go into high school, they're learning to become adults. And we- because we did discuss, like, does this need to happen at the high school as well? And part of that is, we're going to use cell phones our whole life. And so felt that it was age-appropriate to leave it open in the high school. Kids are better able to understand that their computers are academic and their phones are social, and they have better self-control of that during the school day.
And then I would just agree, actually, with Al in terms of the language. And actually, the language that you had written is more clear. Can it be an emphasis area instead of actually changing policy? So it was like, kids couldn't escape the things that happened over the weekend, and then we would have to dig up, because those things affected our school environment. So we'd be spending a lot of our time, you know, dealing with that and and protecting that that student that could be, you know, being bullied. But once we implemented the pilot, it was as if so many of those situations that happened outside of school stayed outside of school and really didn't affect our school environment. We actually had a picture that was taken, second trimester though, resurfaced over the weekend, like the last week of school. And I spent two and a half hours of my day trying to get this picture taken, you know, taken down. And I would ask kids, I'm like, can I see this picture? They're like, well, Ms. Churgie, I can't show you my phone. I'm going to get it taken away. And I'm like, no, no, I need, you know, and then to come to find out that really it wasn't being recirculated, that a girl saw it on a camera roll anyways. But it was just a reminder of all the time that we put into this and that kids just can't escape the social media pieces, even in their school day, when we have it accessible, even during that lunch period.
Thank you. I know this isn't part of this presentation, but Kay, can you speak a little bit to what what impact that has at the high school level?
I would say that as our kids go into high school, they're learning to become adults. And we, because we did discuss, like, does this need to happen at the high school as well? And part of that is, we're going to use cell phones our whole life. And so felt that it was age appropriate to leave it open in the high school. Kids are better able to understand that their computers are academic and their phones are social, and they have better self-control of that during the school day.
And then I would just agree actually with Al in terms of the language. And actually, the language that you had written is is more clear. Can it be an emphasis area instead of actually changing policy?
As I recall, it seems like both North and South have a special activity time during lunch. I don't remember what you call it, but it's an activity that people keep busy at. I don't think you have something the same as at Kennedy, but similar. Am I right?
Yeah, so at North, we do have opposite a student's lunch period. We call it eagle time. It's a 30-minute block of time, opposite of their lunch period, so it doesn't occur during lunch. And so there's a number of activities students get to choose from on a six-week rotational basis at North. And South is a little bit different in that respect, in that they their time is advisory during morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for doing what you can to reduce kids' times on not necessarily devices, but social media, because you are saving lives. And I'm going to throw this out there, because this is where we're at. The number of teenagers and young adults with clinical depression more than doubled between 2011 and 2021. Suicide rate for teenagers nearly doubled from 2007 to 2019 and tripled for 10 to 14-year-olds in particular. Nearly 25% of teenage girls made a suicide plan in 2021. All indications lead to the shift in 2012, when majority of Americans had smartphones. It's not screen time, not talking about that. It's social media and is killing our children. So what you witnessed in your schools was what we are missing in our society at age, which is an improved sense of connectedness with one another. And when we're glued to these things, specifically social media, I'm not talking Candy Crush or Minecraft, those do not have those indicators. It's the social media. Your, thank you. And I would love to see that happen in the high school. I know it's a big ask, but I know I have a lot of faith in the kids nowadays, who hopefully they may be able to see what happened to the generation before them. So thank you for doing that.
So one thing that I forgot, you mentioned the in doing in your school for for so heard that South and North are also implementing those, is that is that also what you're doing for lunchtime and other activities?
Correct. Kennedy did the pilot, trimester three, on a much smaller scale. They have a smaller middle level than we do, given their success. We're going to take a lot of their a lot of their successes and implement in our buildings.
Same thing at North. We've already allocated funds and started ordering card games, board games, and other activities that students can participate in together at lunch.
Thank you very much. We formally adopt the handbooks?
They'll come at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, then moving on to discussion action items, we have one tonight. And that is an action item, approval of student parking fees. And Ryan is that's, oh, okay. So we are, Ryan presented, we had a discussion last board meeting, right? And then we had a public hearing earlier this evening. And now we're looking for an action item.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair Haas. The administration would recommend the approval of the updated parking fees in the amount of $10 per student vehicle with a $5 replacement, given the guidelines that were shared.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to any comments or questions. Scott?
A while ago, we had a student presentation regarding parking. And one of the things that they had mentioned was they how how expensive it was to maintain the parking lots. So but nobody seemed to have the numbers. So I asked, what are the numbers? And I just recently got the numbers from our business office. And I think I passed a sheet around for each of you to look at. We had a lot of snow last year. But there's also, in addition to this snow removal, there's crack filling and striping of each parking lot. And I know that our students were paying more, and I was wondering why they were paying more before, if somebody could tell me that. They were paying $85, I think.
Yeah, you are absolutely correct. I think it was actually 100 for full price. And then it was, we transitioned, I think, three years ago to a graduated, right? It used to be full flat, now it's graduated. The rationale that I would offer is that, a couple of things. When you know better, you do better, right? I think we know better. I think we know that our students and families shouldn't have to carry the this burden on their backs, especially given the demands of transportation. And would love for people to be able to to take advantage of this opportunity. And I think that our, we've seen consistently a change over the last decade of percentages of our our families who are food insecure, right? And so what what might have been more acceptable or more appropriate potentially five, three, five, 10 years ago, looks different now, based on the families that we serve.
Okay, I also noticed that there's quite a difference in revenue between Apollo and Tech. Is that primarily because enforcement? I mean.
I would say potentially, yes. I think you also see a difference in free and reduced lunch rates, right? We know that our North side has a higher or free and reduced rate count. So potentially, right, I'm not going to make the presume the correlation by the connection, but I think there's a correlation, right, to people who can afford their cars, their insurance, and who can drive. And there are also 300 fewer students at Apollo than Tech.
People that can own cars and drive cars can afford to pay a little parking, I would think. Natalie, go on ahead. Okay.
Well, do you have any other comments?
That's enough.
Okay, Natalie?
I want us to be careful to assume that people that own cars have money. Some people live in their cars. And it's, you know, and that's a reality for some of our our district families. So let's, I would rather us not assume what families are going through. You know, there might be a one-car family where it's a high schooler bringing, maybe they're bringing all of their, you know, they're not able to ride the bus for whatever reason, they're out of district or whatever. And of course, we would work with them, but we don't know everybody's story. Maybe they're driving the one-family car because they have to go to work afterwards, you know, whatever is the reason. So I think the bottom line, like Lori said, is this isn't on our families. These two things are actually not correlated. These are two separate issues, so the correlation, I don't want our our kids or our families to feel like there is correlation between that. This is a district expense. And in my opinion, anyway, the what we're asking our families to pay is a different, for a different reason. And from what I heard from the presentation, mostly for safety, and I'm in agreement with that. And I just, like, this is, I'm excited kind of to see next year where we go, because this was the issue that was tackled this year, but this is because of student voice, right? So, you know, to see students work together, I think that is the most exciting thing. I don't really want anybody to pay anything, but I'm not going to go against what all of the students said, because that's what was the, that's what the congregation said. So I just really want to highlight that student voice was the reason behind this. And we all wanted that so bad, and here we are. So thank you, Dr. Putnam, and for everybody that that did that together.
Any other comments? So administration is recommending approval of the proposed changes for student parking fees for the 2023-2024 school year. Al?
I would move that we approve the student parking fees for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second. 2023-2024 school year.
2023-2024 school year.
Thank you. And Monica, you're seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, I have a motion by Al, a second by Monica. Any further discussion? Zach, can you please call vote?
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Zach Doral CS. Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Monica Segara Swartz?
Yes.
Heather Williams?
Yes.
Scott Andreasen?
Yes.
Natalie Copeland?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. We have the Board of Education Education Standing Committee reports presented by committee chairs. I believe we have two, Board Development Policy and Governance Committee Chair Scott Andreasen, do you have a report?
I, yes, the committee met on May 24th. Gary Ganji, Kate Nelson, and Mike Rivard reviewed the following board policies with committee members. And the board committee discussed and made recommendations. Mr. Ganji reviewed Board Policy Number 805, Waste Reduction Recycling, and Policy Number 806, Crisis Management with Board Development. And we'll be presenting both this evening as a first reading to the full board. Mr. Ganji reviewed Board Policy Number 906, Community Community Notification of Predatory Offenders. And he'll be doing a further review of this policy and procedures and bring it back to our board development in August. And finally, Mr. Ganji reviewed Board Policy Number 903, Visitors to School District Buildings and Sites. Minor changes were made substituting the word law enforcement instead of police in the text of the policy, and no other changes to the policy were recommended. That's it.
Thank you. And then Board Finance and Audit Committee Chair Al Dahlgren?
Finance Committee met on May 26th, and the topic of discussion was the Apollo, the possible future Apollo referendum. And I'm not going to go into it, because in Item 8B, we're going to go into it in detail and cover everything that I would say, so.
Appreciate that. Okay. Then moving on, we have future agenda items. June board meeting work session, although the work session is tonight, maybe it means July. Or 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan, approval of the 2022-2023 revised budget, approval of the 2023-2024 budget, approval of student and family handbooks, and McKinley facilities. Does any, at this time, does any board member want to suggest a future agenda item? All right, sounds good. Then we, I am looking for a motion to adjourn our board meeting tonight?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Scott, a second by Al. All in favor, say aye. All right, so it is 7:15 PM. Our regular board meeting is adjourned, and we are opening up our Board of Education work session. First up, we have our assessment plan update. And Donna Rover, Executive Director of Research Assessments and Enrollment, is joining us tonight. Welcome, Donna.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, board members, colleagues, and listening community. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you kind of an update on our district-wide assessment plan for next year, as well as just giving you kind of a status of what we've been doing, what we've been up to, and what we hope to do next. I'm going to start by just giving a quick recap and setting some context for us. And so let me get my slide deck going here. If you recall, we originally grounded this work in the strategic plan. Of course, it compels us to make sure that how we're measuring student learning is comprehensive, continuous, essential, useful, all those good things. You'll also, we talked about the importance of understanding the different layers of assessment in our system, from the classroom all the way up to the state, and that it's real important that we are focusing on continuing to grow our data and literacy skills. And one way in which we've been able to do that in these last couple of years has been through our continuous improvement work. And so on the right-hand side of the slide, what you'll notice is that this year, which is our third year of going into this work, we're really trying to help align how our schools, departments, teams are working on goals towards meeting strategic vision, mission. And then we're looking at our individual actions and aligning those to our team, school, department goals, and really wrapping our professional learning needs around those identified goal areas this this year. And we're really excited about this work. It really feels like things are kind of coming together nicely. And so more on that, I'm sure as the year goes on, you'll hear more and more as we we move into this. From last year, you'll remember, we had Dr. Rodriguez here, who spoke with us a lot about the research. And as you heard earlier from Director Stebner, the the ongoing work around literacy instruction and the what we would call the knowing and doing gap around research and what happens in the classroom. And so bridging that is a lot of what's happening with our letters training and with some of our math work this year. We shared this slide, I believe, last year, which just kind of gives you a flow chart look at like where all the layers of assessment are and and how they interact. And in order to have a balanced assessment system, you really have to have high-quality assessment in all of these areas happening. And so this year, some of the things that we've done, we've had a measurement design team that has met, and we took a look at some of the needs, the gaps, and identified some next steps. And one of the things that we decided was a real priority was really looking closely at K5 in particular. Our learning and teaching department did a really heavy lift this year evaluating math curriculum and adopted a new elementary math curriculum. And then we had many, many teachers begin, I don't know how many, but we had quite a few teachers begin the letters training. And in that learning, we also were able to kind of understand how our STAR assessment was helping us understand skills at really discrete levels. And so we brought in the vendors to review the products. STAR is one of them that we looked at, along with Fastbridge at the elementary level. And those are both products that learning, Renaissance Learning has in their toolkit. So it's our current vendor that we looked at for literacy. And we also looked at iReady, which was the math vendor. So we had two key vendors that we looked at. And they gave us So we had two key vendors that we looked at, and they gave us sandboxes to play in. So we had many people get in and touch and feel and really look at the granular probes that were in there for measuring learning, give us feedback, and we landed on a couple. And so another rationale, just to give you, for looking at different assessments is really our current reality. And, you know, we could wait, we could be a district that would say, well, you know, the Read Act is coming, we have a year, but in looking at where we are and in looking at what we are doing and what we are moving in this next year, it really doesn't make sense for us to wait. We really want these new measures in place for our baseline processes as we move into really honing in on the practice and the skills. So lots of our staff attended a wonderful presentation by the CARRY folks, which is the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement, put on by the University of Minnesota. And we did a lot of learning, I believe, with that presentation. And again, our math teachers who piloted iReady, as folks are doing these things, their skills around assessment are growing. They're learning, they're becoming more aware of the different skills that they're trying to measure. And so we think that the new tools that we are putting in place for next year are going to really align nicely with this work. So these are the new tools. One, you'll see for K1 and reading and math, we are going to measure early literacy and early numeracy skills at the K1 level. These are screeners, what we call, they're broad and they're specific, okay? So one of the, one of the problems with STAR that we identified was that while it's a broad measure and it lends itself to giving us some specific information, it does, it wasn't directly measuring a discrete skill. So for example, a student might do a CBM, which is a curriculum-based measure, a reading fluency test, and in that test, we might be able to ascertain letter sounds, how well they know the letter sounds. One of the big differences with the new measure that we've selected is that all of these discrete skills, there's 13 different probes that we can use that are very specific to each of the foundational skills. So the team felt this was a much better alignment for the work and for what they've been learning, and we're gonna, we're gonna put these out, and we're gonna really give them a good try this fall, and it'll be phased in through our academic leads. So teachers in the fall won't do these one-on-one, but we will grow it each screening period to get more and more. So by the end of the year, we would have all of our teachers really understanding and knowing how to do these. The second and third grade students are also going to be universally screened, they're going to get a reading fluency, and then they're going to do an A-reading, which is like an adaptive reading test, very similar to STAR using Fastbridge, and they're going to do the iReady diagnostic, which is very similar to the STAR math, except for the fact that it's much, the teachers really feel it's aligned to their math curriculum. It's the same vendor, so it makes sense. One of the other things that both of these vendors provided for us was assessments in Spanish with a willingness to partner with us to create Somali assessments for our kindergarteners. So that's a real positive, we think, for our plan. Again, fourth and fifth grades, similar, they're going to have a screener, auto reading, and math automaticity screener, and then they'll be using an adaptive reading and an adaptive math assessment for the universal screening as well. So that's what we have that's new on the fall plan, starting in the fall. We're not done. We're also going to be piloting, and this is really exciting. We have a number of teachers interested in looking at classroom assessment practices. In fact, on Friday, there's a couple of us will be meeting with Dr. Rodriguez and some other assessment directors across the metro to kind of come together and look at district assessments, high-quality teacher-designed assessments that would sit in this platform called DNA, which stands for Data and Assessment. And what we liked about this tool is that it really allows teachers to use it formatively and summatively. It provides a way for the district to implement common assessments across areas and really lift up some of the great work that's happening out there, where we're getting the kind of learning and outcomes that we really want. And so this will start small, but this is really exciting and new, and I think, you know, we'll, it's never the tool, right? It's the people and the work behind the tool, but I think we have some good energy, and hopefully this will lend itself to really some big impact. Finally, this summer, we will be looking at school health assessment. We're going to look at mental health screeners that sit in a tool called SHAPE. And so Director Avenson and Assistant Superintendent Revard and I, we will be meeting to review the SHAPE Tools, they're called. We want to examine all of our data that we've been collecting all year, our climate data, we're going to look at our SEL data, and our feedback from our mental health forum again. Our goal will be to really understand what are the needs that we have around mental health screening. We know that from our Minnesota Student Survey and from some other, obviously, we heard earlier tonight a little bit about that, it's really hard to ignore for all of us in the room who care deeply about kids and making sure that they're ready to learn. So we're going to explore what the SHAPE system provides in that. We're also going to work with community partners, our co-located service providers, make sure we're involving all the right people. Our focus, I think, really needs to be on those transitional years, so with a keen eye on kids moving to sixth grade, kids moving to ninth grade, we know that those are some tough transition years oftentimes for kids. And so we'll know more after the summer, and if we have some implementation information to share later, we would bring that back then to the school board. I just want to thank all the, honestly, the teachers have just really done a lot of work this year to help describe their needs to us, those of us that are trying to figure out what are the best ways to support making sure that we're getting the learning outcomes we need. We can't do it without them. They really have to help, help us make sure we're getting the right tools in place, and I really feel like we got some good ones to move forward with. So that's the update for this evening, and I thank you, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Okay, we recently had a presentation on science-based reading, and I think there was even something in the legislature about that topic. Are you going to be assessing changes as we start to implement science-based reading?
Well, I think, so we're always looking at the impact of instruction on learning, and so that's one of the beauties of putting place, putting in place new tools, is we have an opportunity to position these tools to help us do exactly those kinds of things. So I believe that the Fastbridge tool is a good way for us to know how well our instruction is ensuring those foundational literacy skills, for example. So we would use those to inform, inform that work, yes.
Okay. Have we done much mental health screening in the past? What is the history of that?
And that's a great question that I have to honestly say I'm not sure I'm the right person to ask. I know that Director Avenson would be able to answer that better. Mike might be able to, you might be able to answer that a little bit better.
Scott, I think most of the information that we've gathered has been through the Minnesota State Survey and some of that information. I don't know if we've gone as in-depth as what we would like to do in terms of making sure we're helping kids, especially during those transition years that Donna's alluding to.
Okay, it sounds like not a lot.
I would say that that was accurate.
This would be a good program then.
Well, this is, so just, it's about screening, right? So it's not diagnosing, it's not getting into really, that would be more tier two, tier three, and what we would do in collaboration with community partners and families and all of that. The role of the SHAPE system is really, it's just to make sure we're not missing anything. And it doesn't tell us the why or get to the root cause, but it's a screener.
Okay. How are we doing on dyslexia assessment? It's state mandated nowadays.
And we continue to do what we're required to do in terms of universally screening all of our students, and I would say, again, the expert really on that is our good friend, Katie Schneider, who does a wonderful job of keeping up with all of that. So I give Katie an A on this work. I met with her almost an hour and a half the other day, just talking through all of the sort of transition work she's leaving behind from elementary as she moves to secondary, so.
Monica?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm a little confused about, so some time ago, you came to talk about, we were talking about a strategic planning, and you were talking about evaluation, and we were talking about measurements in terms of the strategic planning and some things that were there. So, and we talk about evaluation, and we talk about some things like climate and talking about climate measurements and those kind of things. And now we're talking about assessment, and then it's more the academic part, but I, so my confusion is, what would be the difference, and should everything be kind of together? Or how is this? What are we trying to do with, kind of with this part? I'm not sure if I'm being clear.
So I think what you're asking, and I make sure I'm correct on this, you're asking about, these are academic measures, and your question is about the more qualitative measures around climate, sense of belonging, sort of those developmental assets, and would that be a part of our assessment plan? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so what, when I, how do I look at? So I guess I'm looking at assessment similar to evaluation. So I look at evaluation as a way to see where are we at, if we are in target, doing what we are set up to do. And what I'm thinking about evaluation, I'm thinking about a strategic plan. So I'm thinking about our strategic plan, and that it has to have evaluation for multiple goals that the strategic plan imposes, or not imposes, but what we have set there. And then, how is this part of that? Or, to your point, I think that that's also worth, how is that part of the assessment?
So I would say it's part of, it's part of it, right? Because we're taking data, right? And we're contextualizing it, we're turning it into useful information, we're using it to understand and apply and connect, and that goes into the evaluation process, right? So, but, but I think if I'm hearing you right, what you really are wondering is, how is all of this going to be connected to our strategic plan? And it, so in our strategic plan, when we define our goals and our measures, what we're going to use to measure success on those goals, making sure we're using the right aligned measure to whatever the goal is, is really key. And you know, I know you know this, I've seen some of your logic model work, so I think it's part of it, right? We're constantly collecting data, assessment, academic, qualitative, climate survey data, developmental assets, you know, sense of belonging, those kinds of things. And then as we set our strategic plan and make new targets, you know, we would align whatever measure and monitor. Does that help?
So a little bit separate from that question, my other question is more specifically about the new tools that you are getting. Every time that we have new tools or new data, the first thing that I hear from the evaluator is, we're developing a baseline, and then we have to wait after we develop the baseline, and then we go to know. Can you speak a little bit about that? When are we going to see, so, is this, when are we going to see, I mean, when are we going to understand the data?
So that's another really positive about having some new measures come in, right? Is we can help, help everyone understand that their criterion referenced, how we position them. So foundational skills are something we want kids to master, right? And we want to make sure that they have them. So we're, we're looking at this as a criterion-referenced set of assessments, and vendors will oftentimes, in their technical design of the assessment, also create scales so you can do comparison, and like grade level, peer-to-peer kind of comparison, year-to-year to year growth, and we'll have an opportunity to set up how we want to measure growth across the system using these tools. And so, yes, if we use this tool in the fall, Monica, it's baseline, it has to be, it's the first time we've collected data through this, and it doesn't exactly match what we were using. But we can look at it and see, you know, what we're dealing with in terms of who's at benchmark, who's met the criteria of this. So it isn't, it isn't like we, you know, we should ignore the baseline, right? It's still informative. Does that make sense?
And what happened with the data that we have right now, from the systems that we have right now?
We have it, we still have it, we use it, we share it in the school information reports. We often reference it, you know, our measurement design team references it, our learning and teaching, the directors are all using that pretty regularly in their programmatic work. So I'm trying to lift up those measures in the school information reports. If there's another question we need answered, we can, we can go to that if we have, you know, if we know what the question is.
So kind of going down to that path, how does it, if I'm a parent, how does it trickle down to families? The, well, one thing that I have always been confused a little bit is like, what is what parents see in the report card? Are they seeing the star, are they seeing the MCM, they seeing just the grade of the kid, and what is that telling them? And with the new thing, you're going to change it, and then they're going to see, I don't know, my kid is not in target, and maybe I thought it was in target, those kind of things?
And so there is a parent report with each of these measures, and classroom teachers, you know, will have lots of training and support around the parent tools as we go down this path. And again, my hope is that we understand kids are developing at different rates, but that we're using this to improve, you know, improve. So there will still, eventually, you get to, yes, people want to compare, but we're going to really try to position these for individual improvement and mastery, because I think competency, we need, we need kids to know how to read. In order to read, you need to have your skills developed in a, in a, in a way that allows you to decode text and read. So there's a lot So there's a lot of learning, right? With all of this, there's learning for community, there's learning for parents, learning for teachers, learning for all of us. But we have reports that support it. And, you know, if people have questions, we will, we will get answers.
And one last thing is that when you were presenting, you were talking about assessment to understand those, the skill levels, but you also talk about screenings. And you talk about the mental health screening, that's something that I don't know that we did before. And then what we do with all that? So what, I guess, what is the difference between the assessment and the screening? When do you do screenings? Like once or every so often? And what do we do with those?
Right, so the screenings are required. Under the new legislation, we're going to be required to screen three times a year. It's called a universal screener for early, for the K3, I believe it is, is it K3? At any rate, we would screen three times a year. And screeners are short, right? They're meant to be quick. It's, it's not necessarily going to give you all the detailed information, but it's going to signal who we might need to look at a little more closely. So when I say screener, oftentimes, these assessments get purposed in an assessment plan as either a screener or an interim benchmark, you know, so they're, it's part of a robust system of assessment. So screener is a type, it's a, it's a type of assessment you purpose in your plan to quickly inform who might need to have additional, an additional look.
Okay. And we're doing that just because of the legislation?
We're doing it now too. I mean, we do, it's been a common practice in, in most school districts for many years.
Thank you.
I think confusion is a little bit of the word for the night. First off, there's new assessments here that we're asking for, right? And it wasn't, and these are in addition to the current assessments, or are we dropping some assessments? Yes?
We're going to drop the STAR assessment at K5. We're going to replace the reading with FastBridge, with the tools in the FastBridge software. And we're going to replace math with the tools in the iReady toolkit.
Okay, but the STAR was the one, STAR was the test we used to determine if a student was progressing individually. MCA was what we used to determine if they were at or at above or below grade level, correct?
MCA is really for measuring against the Minnesota State Standards, so if they're proficient on the third grade standards. STAR actually allows us to measure whether or not they're on a grade level that's determined by, you know, the 6 million kids across the state who take that test. So it's the peer-to-peer. It's, it's a little bit of a, it's tricky because Minnesota State Standards are more rigorous than most other states. And so we, we wouldn't equate necessarily the Minnesota State Standards to like the grade level that say NWA MAP or STAR, or even, you know, if FastBridge starts assessing in other parts of the country, we would say that the, it's probably a little different, right? But yes, we use STAR to help us understand how kids are progressing. And FastBridge will do, it's the, it's a very similar design in that it's a 30-minute adaptive measure, very, very similar to STAR. The company, it's the same company, they just acquired FastBridge, which is heavily utilized in this part of the country, this region, the whole state of Iowa, many districts in Minnesota. And so I think what we really liked about FastBridge was the idea that we can do a letter sound probe, we can do a, you know, a specific granular measure rather than having to look at STAR and say, okay, and out of STAR come these additional specific.
So what would we use to determine if our? How would we assess if our kids are learning at a rate that they will meet the Minnesota State Standards?
That is a part of FastBridge, it has, has very good predictive capacity.
And it was not a part of STAR?
It's a part of STAR as well. They all have predictive components to them, you know, where they, where they have a, they've done a correlation to say, you can be 85% confident you're going to end up on the end-of-year exam at this proficiency rate. So they, FastBridge has that, as does iReady, as does STAR, as does MAP. They almost all come with, with that predictive piece.
But in the end on this, we won't be having any additional assessments. I just, I'm going back to a few years ago, it wasn't eight years ago, that one of the big topics was that we were over-assessing kids, we're spending too much time assessing kids and not enough time teaching kids. And that, that's kind of gone away. I don't know where it went, but it's kind of gone away. This is basically keeping us about the same as the amount of assessments, and it's giving us something to know if we're on track as far as meeting the Minnesota State Standards. Because it seems like STAR, I think we did very, we do very well on STAR assessments. We have, I think we take kids a lot further in this district than kids in other districts because they have farther to come. And so on our STAR, we look like we're making tons of progress and then the MCA test time comes and the state comes in and blows us up and says, you're not doing a very good job, which isn't true. We're doing a great job, we're taking kids farther than other districts are taking them, but we're just not getting as far ahead because they started ahead of us, is the way that I've always seen that. But you say, you're telling me that this program or this, this assessment piece should do a better job of bringing us there?
So I would say it's about people, right? It's how we activate around the information. I would say the tools are going to lend themselves to being able to do the broad and the specific measuring that teachers want, and teachers, you know, are a part of this. What's new for everyone's awareness is K, kindergarten. We have never assessed kindergarten in the fall. And we're, we're in monitoring mode, we're all wrapping our head around, what does it mean to monitor and support? It's not pigeonholing, evaluating to a degree where it's like, it's defining any one child. This is a systems piece for our readiness, if you will, in order to position ourselves to really meet kids where they are at these very early ages, right? And bring them along. So the new is the K. You know, and the upper elementary, it's slightly different because we're adding some math that we didn't have before, but we're, the demand is kind of coming from our teachers, which is really, really, you know, where we want it coming from? Because we're trying to grow our monitoring muscles around where kids are, where they need to go, so.
And I'm not questioning you, I trust you guys. I mean, I trust you guys to know it a heck of a lot better than I know it. I'm just asking questions, that's all. Couple of things that I saw in there that made me go, hmm. One was the acronym DNA. I thought it was a terrible acronym for an assessment. Because if I were a parent and you told me that you were doing assessments and were using the DNA, I would start to question what you were assessing. And I just, I'm not, I'm not saying, it's just we like our cute, and I know you guys didn't come up with DNA, but we like our cute little acronyms, but they don't always fit. And the second one is on the, I don't know what we've done in the past for health assessments, so I'm just, I'm speaking from a point, a standpoint of knowing nothing. But that one scares me a little bit. Because it sounds, I mean, it, it, it sounds in a sense like you're saying, we're going to take over the healthcare and we're going to take over the mental health care for students and we're going to take that away from the parents. And I don't want it to sound that way because it's going to become a political hot button if it does sound that way. And I'm not saying, I'm not questioning the validity of it, I'm not questioning anything about it, I'm just saying, we got to be really careful in how we handle that one. And we have to be really careful to make sure that the, the, the mental health care lies first in the family and second in the school, in the school district from a, from an assessment standpoint. And I understand some kids come from homes where the mental, the mental health in the family is, is very, you know, it's just a very poor conduit for mental health, health. However, I don't need to say anymore because you know what I'm saying.
Thank you, I appreciate that caution. Feel the same way, we're approaching this, I feel very cautiously and it'll be very thoroughly thought out before, and it'll come back, yeah.
Natalie?
I'm not confused at all, and maybe that's because I've had kids like in this system right now, you know, and all the assessments that they've done are STAR and MAP and like, what our teachers have been great at is when we come, especially in elementary, they'll say, here's where your STAR is, here's where the goal is for next trimester, here's what, you know, like, so as parents of elementary kids, you're following these assessments pretty, pretty heavily. Because I know if, if that goal isn't reached, then, you know, then that means they're not progressing in the way that they could or should or whatever. So what it seems to me is like, we're still doing that same practice, but with a, with a tool that aligns better with what we now know about reading. So, okay, wonderful. And, you know, it's, I understand what Elle's saying about the SHAPE assessment, and it seems to be like, when our police force bring on, you know, people that are helping with mental health, like, that's not actually really their job. But if they don't, but the community is crying out for help with mental health, and that's, everybody is crying out for help with mental health, especially our students, of course. And so it's not, I don't think it's either or, you know, but the reality of mental health in my kids' friends, especially post-pandemic, is very, can be very scary. And so I would, I want to know, you know, I'm sure we all do, I want to know before it gets to the scary level, you know, so those transition areas for sure, but I'll be interested to hear more about this. So thanks for tackling an issue that isn't really, isn't really education, but if we don't have that, then STAR tests don't matter. You know, if you're coming highly, your body is totally misaligned and your mental health is misaligned, what in the world is a STAR test to you? So, yeah. Thank you for this presentation, and I'm always amazed how you take this like, really mind-boggling thing and like, put it into words that I understand, so way to go.
Thank you. Are we good?
Thank you, Donna. Okay, next we have consideration of future facilities referendum, Apollo, and presenting Superintendent Lori Putnam and Executive Director of Operations Gary Gange.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Haas, members of the Board of Education, listening public. Tonight, we're going to have a discussion about the necessary learning opportunities at Apollo High School. For close to a decade, we've discussed the need for schools whose facilities support us in preparing our students for today's and tomorrow's citizenry and workforce. Our community provided us with a new tech high school in 2017, and we are grateful. Our students, staff, and families are grateful, and the learning opportunities available through this facility are stellar. However, the referendum for Apollo was not approved by voters. Yet, that does not negate the need for facilities that allow for full. Our community needs all of our students fully prepared for their futures and to meet the needs of the greater St. Cloud community. Knowing this, we have been good fiscal stewards of our taxpayers' dollars and diligently addressed learning and facility needs when able. We have made significant improvements to instructional supports and learning facilities at Apollo over the past few years, using a variety of funding sources noted on this slide, including totaling approximately $14 million. I want to just point out, as we are fond of doing in education, there are some acronyms on this, on this slide, and I want to make sure that our public and our board is, is clear on what we mean. So ESSER, that E-S-S-E-R, refers to one-time federal funds. And then long-term facilities maintenance, which will be referred to in this discussion by the acronym LTFM, is funding for projects for repair and upkeep, for repair projects and upkeep of facilities. Unfortunately, remodeling or new construction are not allowable with LTFM funds, with the exception of remodeling or construction of individual restrooms per recent legislative changes. Recent meaning this last legislative session, to be clear. We are very proud of our responsible fiscal management and our ability to maintain and improve our schools, including these instructional supports and facilities improvements at Apollo with the funds that we have been allowed or given. Despite these improvements and despite being clear about the remaining needs at Apollo High School, administration does not recommend seeking approval for a referendum during the upcoming year. Factors that contribute to this decision to recommend against a referendum include: uncertainty of the economic outlook, the impact of the legislative session on businesses and individuals, particularly as it relates to us still understanding what the taxes mean, and the perceived impact of historic funding for education. Please be clear, however, this doesn't negate or lessen the need for changes to Apollo's facilities. Rather, we recommend using available funding options to make future improvements where possible. These funding sources include one-time state or federal and LTFM dollars and grant opportunities. We know that there are facility needs that we cannot meet with funding sources available to us. We know that we will need to bring a referendum to the public in the future. Administration recommends having at least semi-annual board work session discussions on the Apollo facilities' needs and our progress, as well as the timing of a future referendum election, a bond election. We will continue to partner with our board, our community, our staff, and our students to identify optimal referendum election dates in the near future. The total of recent investments using one-time, kind of use or lose it, federal funding and state funding and available LTFM dollars is $14 million. The total of estimate of, for what needs to be done is approximately $48 million. And please note, this estimate is in today's dollars. We know that inflation, inflation, and cost of material and labor increases will impact this total in the future. will impact this total in the future. Next, we're going to discuss what projects are still needed and the potential funding sources for these projects, including LTFM dollars and what needs to be funded through a bond election.
Facility needs at Apollo that are LTFM eligible include improving the instructional environment in the B and C wings, auditorium improvements that include finishes such as seating, flooring, walls, and lighting, and providing safe and adequate restroom facilities.
Knowing that we must make updates to Apollo High School and knowing that these projects that Gary discussed and that you saw on this slide are LTFM eligible, our administrative recommendation is to issue $15 million in LTFM bonds. This would be included in the fiscal year 25 LTFM plan, which will be reviewed June 21 at the board session and voted on in July. The board would then certify this for the fall and taxes would be payable in the calendar year 2025. We know this election year is not the time to ask the public for a significant outlay of funds. However, the tax impact for $15 million in LTFM bonds is low. For example, the monthly tax impact on a $250,000 home would be about $2 a month. But we also know that this cost may not be realized by taxes, by taxpayers due to other potential levy reductions.
Apollo facility needs that could only be met through a referendum include a controlled entrance for visitor management, a culinary lab that would provide an instructional experience to meet the workforce needs, music and auditorium improvements that include reconfiguration of instructional space, sound booth, and theater equipment upgrades, kitchen and serving area improvements to provide workflow and student flow for a safe dining experience, renovations for tech ed labs to be consistent with current instructional and workforce needs, as well as the other items listed on this screen.
Knowing we have significant Apollo facilities needs that can only be funded through a referendum, administration requires semi-annual board discussions on the progress made in our facilities, the impact of facilities' needs on safety and learning opportunities at Apollo, and a review of the local economy and community perceptions of a proposed referendum. We welcome any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Natalie?
Thanks for presenting on this. I have a couple of questions. Can you remind me, because I know we did a lot of controlled entrances in my board tenure so far. And I think we did almost all of them, right? And so what was our, I can't remember why our decision was to not do Apollo. Was it because we thought we'd do it in the referendum or what was our thinking then?
It had to do with, it was always included in referendum discussions, as well as where the office is located. It's not right by the door. It, it creates some challenges.
And was that one-time money that we used for that from the state to do the controlled entrances? Or how did we pay for that?
Amy's not here, but my recollection is we used a few, few different resources.
I thought there was a grant, Safe Schools or something like that.
I believe there's some grant money. I believe there's some board allocated funds. But we will get that information. I don't want to misspeak.
Thank you. I think that's just one of my, you know, with kids that go to Apollo, one of my higher concerns because of how great the controlled entrances are everywhere else. So wondering maybe if some more of that, those grant dollars will come down. But thanks for that. The, I would say for my personal thoughts, at least biannually, I would like to see it come forward. I understand you don't want to keep asking the community, are you ready, are you ready, already? But it was through the finance board or where it is, you know, I think, I'd like to hear more about this quarterly or at least by, by trimester if possible. Thank you.
Anybody else? Scott?
It sounds like we've already managed to pay off $14 million worth of improvements. That's, that's good. It sounds like we still need about $48 million to do the job. We can get 15 million with the LTFM bonds, which leaves about 33, 33 million for the next referendum. But now is not, not the time for a referendum with all the changes going on in the legislature. So we'll do what we can with the 15 million LTFM bonds, just like we've been doing what we can, but the 14 million we already spent. I think I got it.
So first a comment about, Natalie's comment about the secure entrance. Got to remember that Apollo is different, that everything, all the school and is, it really inquires a significant renovation to do the security. So I do believe that the, the grants were not enough to do, to cover security for Apollo. And also Apollo has, I don't know, tons of doors. And that's, that's part of the, the things to see in Apollo. One thing that I want to ask you, Gary, is that how, how are we making sure that everything that we're doing with the renovations and, or I mean, I don't want to call it renovations, with the maintenance and, and the, the bond and everything? How are we going to make sure that we're not going to have to redo it? How, can you explain that to, to me? That how is that, if we have our referendum, how is that we're making sure that that's part of it? Like when we, more often than not, they say just scratch everything out. It's easier and many times they also say it's cheaper. So can you speak a little bit about that, please?
That, that's a great question. As we, and this goes back as far as when we were restoring after the Apollo fire, we were already looking at how, how can we make those improvements, keeping in mind that we would, we would need to continue to, to upgrade and have needs at Apollo. And so every project we do, we take a look and we make sure. I think a good example would be some of the roofing projects that we've done and just the way that we've sectioned those off and sent them, some of the HVAC projects to make sure that we were going into areas that we wouldn't redo. And we've done that with lighting projects and flooring projects and just across the board.
Another big question that I have about Apollo, and we just had a presentation about policies in phone use. But one of the parts that impacted me before about when we were talking about the referendum is that the needs for plugins, for electric, drawing electrics again, plugin not only for students, but also for, for all types of devices, computers. And there are many things. And there is not like a plugins in the cafeteria, for example, and those kind of things. Do part of the player? How is that part of everything that I mean, rewire? It seems to me like you, you have to like major changes of things. And that's not going to be part of this, is part of the future, is part of the referendum. How is that part of the question? How are we solving the issue that students or everybody has right now to not have any enough plugins?
Another good question. So a couple of different approaches there. Again, we take a look at where we're doing work. Right now, we're doing some HVAC work down in the C wing at Apollo. And the, when the ceiling tiles are taken out is a good time to wire. And so we, we're doing some fiber optic wiring to get more capacity down in that area right now and clean some things up. The other advantage we have is some of the new furniture, the new furniture in the commons area and in the media center area come with the ability to, to charge multiple devices. So we, we need one, one outlet and, and we can expand the, the charging and recharging capability. And so between furniture and then looking at where we're in, have walls apart or ceiling apart, then we drop wire.
Al and then Natalie?
Going to say thanks to the administration. I think that the decision not to go forward with a referendum at this point in time shows admirable restraint in a period where we are coming out of a legislative session where they kind of lost their marbles and just spent like, there was no spending limits. And that, you're right, the effect of that has not, we don't know exactly how that's going to impact. I know some of the things they're holding back now for a couple of years because even the legislature doesn't know how much it's going to cost. Like the paid time off type things they're holding back now till, for two, two years or so. Two years, I think. Just because they don't know the total impact of what that's going to be. And for a small business person who's paying taxes in the community, if you, you got to have, you got to know on stuff like that before you can come out and support a referendum. And I don't think it does us any good to run referendums if there's really no chance for them to pass. I think if we're going to run a referendum, we, we have to believe that we can pass it and we have to believe that it's in the, it's just that's the best decision at that time. And just again, in this, in this tax environment, looking at a election that's coming up where the county's going to be asking for a sales tax increase for a jail and the city is looking for a sales tax increase for roads. And then we go and pile on with a sale, with a, with a tax increase for a school. I just, the, the tax environment right now just doesn't support it. COVID was not good for a lot of things. But one thing that COVID was good for was it brought a lot of money to our school district to the tune of $30 million. And we were able to use a lot of those dollars for improvements to Apollo that were much needed. And we did not have to go out to the local taxpayers to do it. And Apollo right now, after spending, well, after, at the end of this summer, after spending several million dollars on improvements, and people will see those improvements happening this summer, I can guarantee it. Apollo's going to be a much nicer school next year. It's not going to be where we want it to be. But I know that the teaching and learning that goes on in Apollo is going to be exceptional next year, whether we have a referendum or not. And to, again, to show the restraint, to hold back, it's a lot easier to just say, let's go for it. I think it was a really, really wise decision. And I hope the community supports that decision. And down the road, when we do go out for a levy for Apollo, they trust us, believe us, and know that we're asking the right question at the right time.
I know we're all aware of this, but you know, I just want to put, I just want to put the equity discussion back on the table and just to, not that it ever was off the table, but just the understanding of if you, if you sit in Tech's auditorium, and I spend many nights sitting in Apollo's auditorium, that it's uncomfortable, the mic situation is better, but not resolved. You know, the, the lighting situation is horrible, like, and I know what we're saying here is we can use certain money for that and we can't use certain money, you know, can't use the money for certain things in there. But it's those sort of things that, knowing what my students feel and what I feel as a parent, that even though I know at this board level and at this table and people on the screen here don't see that Tech and Apollo and McKinley, or they're all our kids, but I think our kids can really feel like, when, when my kids go to Tech, they're like, oh, okay. You know, and it's in the same district. So we're all aware that that's still on the table. And I want to say that for the public as well because this is really tough for Apollo families. I mean, it's really, it's tough for me to agree with this. I actually do agree, but I, I'm waiting. But I think a lot of the reason why I agreed to wait is because the lack of education, not even education, the lack of understanding about school funding, that we can use some for some, but not for others. And the fact that we are massively still underfunded, even with the legislature coming through in a few items for us. So what I want to say just for public consumption, which everybody knows here, is that, you know, when you, when, when we hear historic funding for education, it doesn't mean that we're getting more than we need. We have never gotten what we need for years, for decades. And we still aren't going to be able to get what we need for our cross subsidies. So, you know, that, that's a, that's a tough thing to understand as a, as a community. Because I try to understand public funding for education and I'm here, you know, how many days a week and I still don't understand a lot of it. But the, I want to just say that it's really sad as well that we're going to have, more money goes to our jails and not to education. So I'm just going to put that out there. That's backwards, the total backwards thinking of, of our nation. But we can't do anything about that here. So the last thing I want to say is can we go through again, Gary, what is allowed? Because I want to just understand each of those boxes a little bit more specifically for me with the auditorium, to understand what is going to be done in there versus what can't yet be done.
Yes, I believe, is this the slide, Natalie?
It's the, is this the one where we can do things?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can, because I saw auditorium on here and then on the one where we can't do some of it. So if you can explain that, that'd be awesome.
There's two that we can do, and that's the LTFM and we can do the COVID dollars. That was also projects that we have planned that we're using federal funding for.
Those two. Okay, thank you.
This one. And, and a number of these have been done. Some, some are currently in progress and some, one for next summer. So the pool repairs improvements in process, some parking lot and sidewalk improvements, the HVAC and roof we talked about. Over on the other side, the stadium improvements and scoreboard are this summer, LED sign this summer. The others above that would be already completed.
Yeah, I was actually talking about the next one. Yeah, this one. The reason I'm talking about the auditorium so much is I'm actually kind of concerned about safety in there sometimes. And the reason for that is the, if you've ever been in there, the like, it's such a massive slope when you go down. And when I see grandparents in there, you know, at different band concerts and things like that, that may be struggling with a walker. It's all, it's not that it's not up to code, but it's just, or not that it's unsafe because of something we've done, but it's just not the way things are built anymore. And so that's why I'm harping so much on it because that's, that's a highly used space. And I've just seen some, some improvements that would need to be made for safety for some of our folks.
All right. Yeah, so, so in the auditorium, the, some of what you described wouldn't be eligible for LTFM because it's, it's more of remodel versus replacement or repair. So what we'd be looking at for our LTFM would be finishes like seating, flooring, walls. If there's, if there's soundproofing on the walls already that can be replaced. And then the lighting. It gets a little trickier once we get into the stage lighting with the light boards and all that. That gets a little iffy once we get there. And then the other ones I'd mentioned were the B and C wings. That's where the, the majority of the instructional areas are. And that would be flooring, lighting, painting, those types of things. What else did we hit? Oh, and then, then the bathrooms. As Dr. Putnam said, that there was some recent legislation that gives us some, some more liberty there to, to, to upgrade bathrooms and possibly add bathrooms, so.
That's great. You can tell my kids are in music and plays, right? Because I'm harping on the auditorium, but thanks so much for that.
And can I add something to that, Gary?
Yes.
And you said it, but one way to think about LTFM dollars usually used as a, it's a long-term facilities maintenance. So it's maintaining your current facilities, but you cannot use those dollars to change your current facilities. So it's like you can paint a wall with LTFM, but you can't move a wall with LTFM. You can change a kitchen, you know, you can change some equipment in the kitchen, but you can't remodel a kitchen, or you can't expand walls or move, move things within the kitchen with LTFM dollars. Then it becomes Then it becomes something you have to do through a referendum. Health and safety is another fund and do COVID, not COVID, do a, no, now I'm really confused. Stop with the acronyms. The, what am I trying to think of that? Like the handicap, the ramps, not handicap, but the, the ramps and things like that, the 80, yes, that ADA. ADA improvements can be done out of what?
That, that the health and safety is real particular about what you can and can't do. And so we rely heavily on Amy on that one. And often she looks it up because sometimes a door handle is allowable, sometimes it isn't. We almost have to look at that project by project.
Maybe we can look at that. I think what, what I see is when an older person gets up and then goes to, I'm not even saying older, it's not about being old, it's just when a person who has limited capabilities of walking gets up, there's nothing to really hold on to because there's no railings. And so when they come out into the very steep walkway, then I've just seen a lot of kind of wobbliness and nowhere to reach. So I don't know if that is something we could do, but.
We will look at it, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that, Al. That's great.
I appreciate as well and want to publicly acknowledge the decision to hold back. Having lived in the community and this being my first term, so very short in terms of kind of historical knowledge, I think there's also a part publicly that we need to remind ourselves that families choose where they, where they live based upon schools at a very high rate. And I don't know, when we do a referendum, do we bring in, like I look at the South Side, particularly around tech and the growth that is happening. Do we include economic studies that demonstrate support and why, I mean, the realities and realtors will tell you curb appeal matters. When, when people are making decisions about where they live, when folks are deciding about communities, particularly young families, which is a lot of economic power in your, in your community. Do we tie all of that in in a referendum? And is that what the studies do? And, and do we have information from the tech build out that supports or would help us when the time comes to talk about Apollo?
Want me to? Yes, we, we do. And we've, we've, we've visited, interviewed different groups that, that do that kind of work to, to know who's out there and who knows our community. We've done a demographic study, unfortunately, that was pre-pandemic and some of the variables have changed. We, we reach out to all of our, our, the communities we serve to get building data. But the, the experts in the field is who would bring in to help us analyze all that data.
Okay, I think we're good. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Next, we have the schools update. We have Kate Nelson, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education and Dr. Mike Revard, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education.
Forgive us, we're waiting for our screen, but.
You guys are presenting on the end of year celebrations, correct?
That is correct. Gary, we're still not available. It definitely is not as fun of a presentation if we're just talking.
It's going to be great.
I'll try it. I'm.
Good evening, Chair Hawes, Dr. Putnam, members of the board. Assistant Superintendent Nelson and I are here this evening to do our final schools update. And it will be a celebration of all the things that have happened during this last month. So we will start off with preschool and our preschool friends have headed outdoors for much of their celebrations before summer is upon us. So we see picnics with lunch packs and juice boxes as being part of their celebrations. With some amazing artwork that I noted in that lower right-hand corner by our four-year-old artists that looks pretty amazing from four-year-olds. The rest of our time, there are some picnics and fun things that happened during the last day or two of the school year. The last day for school for our preschools was also a time to celebrate the friendships that they have made with lots of smiles and embraces. Our preschools celebrated a successful year on their journey to kindergarten. So we did have some end of the year celebrations at the elementary schools. Part of May celebrations at our elementary schools include graduation ceremonies across the district on June 2nd. Fifth grade students were participating in ceremonies as they celebrate their accomplishments at the elementary level and prepare for starting their secondary experience. But before this day in June, we also had some incredible celebrations across the district during the last few weeks of May. At Discovery on the left-hand side, our kindergarteners are celebrating spring and the warm ground with some life science enrichment days, learning about worms. And I wasn't sure whether to include this picture when I saw both of those young people smiling. I thought, yes, there was a celebration happening that day. But our fifth graders in these two middle pitchers is also a celebration. That's a celebration of track and field day. Where children from the North Side in fifth grade come to Apollo and partner with our secondary friends and compete in track and field competitions across that North Side. And there's some fun rivalry that happens and we see a tug of war that occurred between schools in our middle pitcher. On the left-hand side, kindergarten concerts occurred across our elementary schools during May to pack gymnasiums when I would visit with family and community members. In the middle at Lincoln, our students had their physical education class turn into a glow bowling fun fest. Hope I said that correctly. I was able to stop in and bowl a few frames, but for the most part, the kids told me to go stand by the pins and be a pin setter-upper, which was probably even more fun to see from their excited faces. Lastly, over on the right-hand side at Oak Hill, Oakley Al played host to our fifth graders as they did their PBIS celebration. And speaking of PBIS, this past month, the Minnesota Department of Education recognized schools and districts for sustaining their positive behavior interventions and support implementation with fidelity. What does that mean? Across the state, 87 schools were recognized as sustaining PBIS exemplar schools for this past school year. District 742 has been recognized again for our entire district being a PBIS exemplar school. And these specific schools were seen as exemplar status. Those are Apollo, Clearview, Discovery, Catherine Johnson's Education Center, Kennedy, Lincoln, North Junior High, Oak Hill, Tullahi and Westwood. Just doing the math very simply, 10% of the schools identified across the state of Minnesota were District 742 schools. At this time, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Nelson.
All right, thank you. We had lots of celebrations also in our secondary school, so I'd like to highlight some of those. This was a very special night, our American Indian graduation recognition, which was held right here at the district office. We have pictures of students putting their handprints on the teepee. Hopefully you were able to at least see the teepee. It was pretty neat set up here. As we move to our middles, South eighth grade showcase and awards ceremony was held on May 26th. Many musicians, dancers and poets shared their talents in addition to a variety of wards. One special award was given to Katra Abdi. She's in grade seven. Katra won the Regional Lions Club essay contest. You see her at the podium there and the photo on the left highlights a bench students in the big build class gifted to the schools. That was one of their big projects. This slide just showcases a few more of our, our talents and awards from that day. So, created the eighth grades during. And as you can, the perfect day for the event. Our North Side also had some fun happening and North Junior High held their cultural family engagement event on May 11th. It was a huge success filled with activities, food and even a fashion show, which is shown on the right. And again, more pictures from that evening. North held their eighth grade celebration on June 2nd. There was a staff versus students basketball game and minute to win it competitions that were enjoyed by all. Kids had a great time. And out at Kennedy, Kennedy held their third trimester award ceremony on May 26th with students being recognized for showing their Kennedy cult character. Kennedy also showcased student talent, as you can see in the pictures on the left. And this year, the year was capped off with an eighth grade celebration also held on June 2nd. We also had the opportunity to celebrate and recognize great success with the bilingual SEAL awards. In total, students from McKinley Tech and Apollo earned 79 awards. 55 world language certificates were given alongside 21 gold and three platinum SEAL awards. And that's absolutely incredible. McKinley also had some celebrations. This was their prom, which was held on May 19th. So you can see Mr. Chakolas, of course, got things going. This next photo, slide depicts McKinley's graduation, which was held on May 25th. It was a beautiful ceremony, celebrating 38 students who completed all of their requirements for graduation. Apollo had an awesome end to their school year too. Their scholarship and awards celebration was held on May 24th. 69 students were recognized and a total of $45,900 in scholarships and awards were granted. Additionally, at Apollo, they showcased their artistic talent at the Luna Gala 2023, which was held on May 26th. And like Apollo Tech also celebrated 41 seniors with an awards night held on May 17th. And like South Tech also had an engaging and fun activities day held on May 26th. The two center photos feature Assistant Principal Jesus Sandoval in the dunk tank and Assistant Principal Hillary Johnson escorting various people, maybe even Dr. Putnam around campus that day. It was a very fun afternoon. As we celebrate, all of our learners are on their accomplishment, on their accomplishments. That includes our ABE students and a wonderful ceremony was held at tech on May 24th. Some more pictures from that great celebration. And last but not least, we celebrate our tech, our graduates from tech and Apollo, which were held last Saturday, June 3rd. And that is our report for the evening.
Thank you. Next, we have two policies up. See 805, the first reading, which is waste reduction and recycling, presented by Gary Ganji, Director, Executive Director of Operations.
All right, we are still having some computer problems. This one doesn't want to, keeps blocking Jan's attachment here. So Mike's going to pop that one up. All right, I will begin talking while Mike's pulling that up. Thanks, Mike. First policy is 805, waste reduction and recycling. There, there wasn't a a significant amount of recommended changes on this one. We went with, we went with the changes that MSBA has recommended. And basically it's, it's what we're seeing with a lot of MSBA policies where, where the recommendation is to remove the statute number within the context of the email. And, and I speculate that that's just if the statute changes, that we don't have to go revise the policy each time. Thanks, Mike. So you'll, you'll see a lot of statutes that are just struck from the document. And then in a couple of spots, they've added some language, like instead of abbreviating subdivision, we, they recommended we write it out. So basically we're aligning with that. So in the future that with future changes, then we, we catch them all. The last, the last area of, of changes would be in the legal references. And it's just title changes within some of those statutes as well. So, so not a lot of change on that one, other than cleaning it up to align with MSBA. Any questions on that one?
Monica?
So no, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to asking for the board to bring up this policy. Policy of, but I had been talking to Gary a little bit more about what is what I'm looking for about the recycling policy. So it doesn't really have anything to do with this one. This one is fine the way that it is. Very boring for what I can tell, but other than that, it's, it's okay. What, what I do really want to see is understanding more about what recycle does and what, what is it does for, for the school, the planet, the saving, the, the saving of money. If it's, if it's something that is worth doing or not, and if it's, and, and how do we do it in a, I can not say the word now, you know, in, in a way that is productive and actually does the thing. So for example, if you look around here, you have several cans that are not really marked exactly how they are. If you look in this room, there are some of them that are green that might signify recycling. Others ones are not. And if you look inside those cans, there are variety of disposal materials there that may, it really doesn't do anything. If you don't recycle right, it doesn't do anything. And it's actually more costly for the city, for whoever gets it, for, for, for us. So I, I, I really would like that we take time to think about that, to think about how our practice work and what do they do? And that we, and, and I have been learning that there is some education that we have within the schools about recycling. But I mean, it doesn't do anything that you teach it in the classroom and then you don't practice it out of the classroom. We do have, as you see, sort of management of waste and sort of many ways that we do recycle and we save in, in waste. But it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's not something that we see outside that. And I'm expecting or, or wanted to see more practices, not only within the students, but also within the staff administration and people that comes and visit. So I had been talking to Gary about that and we had been discussing that, but I wanted to share that with the board, that that's kind of what I was looking for. And that's kind of what I continue to work on.
It sounds like you're looking for procedure changes rather than policy changes.
Right now, we're looking about what is what we need to do. I, I like to see some changes in behavior and, and, but nothing to suggest at this point, but that's what Gary is working with in his team about what is, what is needed there to, to do and what, what do we need? I mean, at the very least to mark right the disposal places that are there. And then if you go and, and throw, if you go to an airport and you realize that everything is very well marked, but people don't use it right, is, is, it should be upsetting not only to me, but it's upsetting to me. Here it is not finding where to put, not, not, not knowing where to put the things that you have in your hands, if here or there. I mean, I, I can go on on this, but not necessarily right now.
And Monica brought up some great points as we discussed it. And really there's, there's two, I think, two levels there. One is, one is. One is one is staff behavior and one is an instructional piece with with students, environmental. The as as we reviewed the policy, we also took a look at practices. And and next fall, when folks come back, not in August, August is crazy, but early in the fall, we we do plan on having a campaign to remind and refresh everyone about about recycling, what our what our obligations are, what our practices are. And, you know, as you look around and and look at at containers, that's that's what our custodial staff will be doing this summer to make sure that we have the the blue containers everywhere and that the right size. But then to take it a step further, you can have a blue container with a recycling symbol on it, but it, what do you put in there? And so they're looking at placards to put on there to say what types of plastic and and what type of paper can go in there. And then finally, we want to have a our communications team will be working with our our Buildings and Grounds Department to come up with a kind of a fun video to motivate folks to to recycle. So it's just a good time when we review these every two years to look at our practices, too.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, last one then. Proposed revised board policy 806, first reading, this is the crisis management policy.
Yes, I hope this one's more exciting for you, Monica, than the last one. So our crisis management policy, we we review every couple of years, and we use our E-PAC Committee to to guide us in this. This is a group of community first responders that meet with us monthly as an advisory committee. And it they've just been so useful as we as we plan. And as we went through this time, really, all of the changes fall on page four under. And and it has to do with with terminology and and just the sign of the times. One that was added in red is cyber attack. Ryan has been just diligent on working with staff on on making sure that we have all the precautions in place. I think we all see in the news the the impact of cyber attacks, and it it is a crisis. I mean, it would it would be a major disruption for us. And so along with our our other procedures we have here, we've incorporated this cyber attack as well. A little bit of a, as we went through and looked at different things, our our partners in the the fire departments said that we need, we need to call out hazardous materials, so we've added that. The term pandemic isn't used in the the healthcare nursing realm anymore. It's infectious disease, so we've made that change. And then community wide, we've we've gone away from lockdown and and containment. And community wide, it doesn't matter if you're Crossroads, Central Care, St. Cloud State University, the language will be active threat or shelter in place. And so the the police department had recommend that we use shelter in place instead of sheltering so that we're just clear and consistent across the board. And I believe those were all of the changes. Any questions on that one?
Take that as a no.
All right.
Thank you, Gary. All right. So looking. Go ahead.
Sorry, Gary, it is more exciting, yes. So the 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 party says that the district response team will develop procedures for the following situations. So the policy only cover the the situations, of course, and the procedures go into where? Into our policy and into our procedures?
Our procedures typically go into our administrative handbook. That's that's where they live right now, but it's interesting that you should bring that up because as part of our strategic plan initiatives, we have a group that focuses just on on student safety, safety. And we had a long discussion this morning on where those procedures should live. They're in the admin handbook, but is that the right spot for them? And so that's something that we're going to study throughout the summer, just to make sure that it's at a place where everyone knows where they are, all the procedures are there, and and that will be part of our review.
So one of the things that I noticed with this policy, and I don't know if you look at it, is we have been cleaning up a lot of policies, and we have been taking procedures out of the policy, but we have made reference to those procedures. And this doesn't have any reference to anywhere, I think. Don't they have references? Am I wrong?
No, we've tried to pull most of those that type of language out of the policy itself, knowing what Gary was alluding to, that those procedures are living in our procedures manuals. So we might still encounter them once in a while in some of the policies, but for the most part, it doesn't speak to procedures.
No, but I mean, the policies still have a reference to the procedure, the procedures inside part. Is that is that not correct?
You probably won't see that in most of the policies as we've tried to adopt so much of the MSBA policies, and they don't have that language about procedures in there either. And I'm trying to scroll down, and I'll turn to Gary, because Gary's been doing policies even longer than I have. I just think as we've as we've moved away from the policies and procedures being together, like on 603 and 603A.
Yeah, there is no more reference.
I don't remember seeing a lot of references to the procedures within the policies.
I I don't either, but I'll be glad to review, partner with Mike, and we can review before we bring it back for second reading, just just to be sure.
Just curious about what the procedures were. I don't know that it's a change here.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's work session? I have a motion by Monica and a second by Natalie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Work session is adjourned. It is 8:47 PM. Thank you for watching, and we'll be back June 21st. Have a good night.